Okay. Good afternoon, it's Wednesday, it's five o'clock, it's my virtual Jericho. Today, a rather special one, it's going to be a virtual town hall where it's your chance to put some councillors on the spot. My name is John Mayer, some of you will know me by fame or in fame. I've been watching lots of people in front of their bookcases for the last few weeks, and so I decided to sit in front of mine, except that all those books behind me are mine, so you don't have to turn left and see what I'm reading, because I only read my own books. But what we're going to do first was ask you all to introduce yourselves in order. Colin Cook, who are you?
My name's Colin Cook, I'm councillor for Jericho and Osnie Ward.
John Howson, who are you?
I'm John Howson, I'm the county councillor for St Margaret's, which is the division which is immediately north of Jericho and stretches up to Somertown. And I've lived in central Oxford for the last 40 years.
And just to declare an interest, John Howson and I were at university together 50 years ago.
Do you want to say which university?
Oh, London School of Economics, where at least one other person here, he'll introduce himself in a minute. Catherine, who are you?
Hello, I'm Catherine Miles, and I'm the Lib Dem candidate for Carfax and Jericho. I've lived in Oxford for approximately, was it four, five years now, and I live in St Mary's, just by Woodland Bridge.
And Alex?
Councillor Alex Hollingsworth, I'm the Oxford City Councillor for Carfax Ward, which covers Walton Street and the city centre, and a Jericho resident for the last 30 something years, I think.
And where did you go to university, Alex?
The University of Texas, and before that, an institution in London with which you're familiar.
Thank you very much. Right, first question, the lockdown, how is it going to end and when is it going to end? Colin, you've got specialist knowledge of this, more than others?
I have no specialist knowledge whatsoever, but my job is Chief Technician in the Medical Sciences Teaching Centre, and the building adjacent to us, the Sir William Dunn School of Pathology, is doing some work on COVID-19 and making a contribution to that research. Sadly, I cannot remember whether the head of that department suggested that the lockdown should end towards, or was speculating that the lockdown would end towards the end of May or the end of June. If I had another computer here, I'd look up his email, but that was his speculation, not mine. I don't know, and I wouldn't wish to speculate.
John, lockdown, when are we going to come out of it and how?
I think it's very difficult for us as politicians at the local level to know, because as we've moved to a command and control approach to the current situation, particularly if you're not even in opposition but the third party, as the Lib Dems are on the county, the amount of information you get is frankly little more than the general public. And my guess is that I hope the various specialist committees which are advising ministers will be able to announce something through the press conference tomorrow that will give us some insight as to the extent to which it will be on the way that the curve is flattening, and what I assume will be, as other countries are doing, what I call a trickle effect, where you start taking off various bits of it, rather than a complete, well, we've ended with the lockdown, so everybody can resume normal life again.
Has Sage been over secretive on all of this, do you think?
I don't think Sage has been over secretive, I think it's unfortunate we don't know who is on it, and I would like a bit more open government, but then I would as a Liberal Democrat, wouldn't I?
Alex, lockdown, how is it going to end?
I don't think we know, and I don't think we can really do much more than speculate, as others have done. It will be a decision made at national level, as was the decision to put it in place in the first instance. And I think when government ministers say that they won't be setting tests for, or thresholds for when we can, when the lockdown will be lifted, I think they're doing the right thing, because the danger is then, say it's a death rate figure, or it's an infection rate figure, when we reach that, but there are other indicators saying that lockdown should continue, there's going to be huge pressure on the government to make a decision which may be the wrong decision. So I'm very much of the view that speculation isn't helpful, and setting numerical quantitative targets is also not helpful. I think the lockdown will end when the scientific evidence, as interpreted by and through the politicians in charge of the government, says it should end.
Catherine, what's your view on the lockdown?
Yeah, well, I would just add to that, to say that yes, it needs to be based on evidence. We're also in the position where we're seeing what other countries who are lifting some of their restrictions are going to be going through in the coming weeks, and so we can also learn from their experiences to inform the approach that we take, you know, very much from a personal level. We're all making many sacrifices at the moment as a result of this. I ideally would love personally to see some of the primary schools and the children back at nursery, that would make things more manageable at a personal level, but everyone has a different views on that, and ultimately, it's the experts that should be deciding on this.
I think we do, John, I think we do have to say a very large thank you to the population in general for the way in which they have coped with the lockdown. It's, you know, suddenly being plunged into a completely different lifestyle, when you weren't expecting it at all, has been a massive challenge for people, and I think on the whole, people have risen to it, and we've seen, and I guess in Jericho, you've seen a lot of community spirit and a lot of people looking out for others who are more vulnerable than themselves.
I think that's been a real benefit of, yeah, unintended consequence, let's say, of this situation in communities that can quite often be seen as very transient in a city, and where there are high student populations, where the population is changing year on year, it is great to see some of the responses that have happened, they're coming together through the hub, through the COVID action group as well. And so let's hope that when the lockdown is released, then lifted, we continue to have these nobly relations and maintain these new social bonds that have been created.
As two Labour councillors, any effect on the community you've noticed?
Well, I think, as somebody who lives in it, I think Jericho's always been a close-knit community, we do know each other pretty well. I think it's true that people have gone out of their way to look out for each other and for their vulnerable neighbours. I spent much of today helping a neighbour around the corner with his sewers, unfortunately not literally, because I think catastrophe really would have ensued if I'd started poking at somebody's drains, but in helping him get some support. And I think that's something that we've all been doing, those of us who've lived here a long time, and I'm sure that's the same in communities up and down the country. I don't think that Jericho is special in that regard, but I do think the fact that it is very much an urban village, that you do walk around, you know people, you know, because your kids went to school together, you see each other in the local pubs and the local shops and all those sorts of things, it does have that feel, and I say that as somebody who grew up in a village with all the positives and negatives that come from that.
Absolutely, Alex. I mean, I think Jericho and Osnie Ward is a bunch of communities. I live down the Botley Road end of things, and every road has been working fantastically well. There is already a network, we have street parties together, things like that, and although the city council has set up with the hub, networks of people to help out those in need, certainly in our area, I think we're very lucky in that those networks already exist. Other areas of the city need more support, but I think Jericho and Osnie are doing pretty well as a result of the way neighbours have come together, in the same way they did during the floods and things like that. A great pulling together of the community, everyone looking out for each other and helping each other out.
How's it all going to bounce back? You're a local politician, how do you see trade coming back, business coming back?
Well, if you're asking me, I mean, I think it will take a while for some of those businesses, but others will bounce back straight away. I think it depends upon the length of time that things are locked down, as it were, and how we open up again, and a little bit of an indication from the government might be helpful on that front as to the path forward, so people can plan a bit more, but we'll see what happens.
Alex, you're the party in power in Oxford, how are you going to help communities to bounce back?
Well, I think the specific question you asked Colin about businesses, I think we are going to see a mixed pattern. So I was speaking to one of the shops that's remained open in Jericho earlier today, and unsurprisingly, since summer shops have closed, they've seen an uptick in trade. And what the guy who runs it and I were talking about is how it's really helped to bring home to people that there are local shops that are good, that provide good services, good quality goods, food, convenience, whatever it is that people are looking for. And one of the things which we may see, and I certainly see this coming out all the way across Oxford and Oxfordshire and across the country as a whole, and you can see it in other countries as well, is a realisation that local shops, local services, local businesses are really critically important, and that supporting them is as much about your society as is your convenience. And I think that, I think and I hope, will change. I think if you look more broadly at the business sector, I think the fact that the government has spent wartime levels of, created wartime levels of debt to support it, I think shows quite how serious the downturn we're going to hit is going to be. And just picking one sector, construction sector, which of course tried to keep going for quite a while during the first few weeks, essentially has run out of materials, has, you know, have more and more people choosing rightly, I think, not to work because it's not safe, it's not perceived as safe. And I think the restart of the construction industry is going to be, what would be the word, jerky, I think, because I think all these supply chain issues run right the way through most modern economies now, and in most modern economic sectors. And when everything relies on just-in-time delivery, the disruption, which is global and is huge, that's going to take a long time to get that up and running smoothly again. So I think we're going to see things stop, start, start again, sites in the construction centres, construction sector getting stuck because materials are there, shops, as happened with Next, I think, when they tried to launch today, and was it yesterday, can't remember now, but they tried to restart their online service, completely overwhelmed, now they've run out of stock, yeah, all of those sorts of things. And, you know, my daughter's discovered to the horror that the British stock of Xboxes has now hit zero, and they're in mourning, because they were hoping to get an upgrade out of it. So you've got those sorts of issues, and I think there is a big role for local communities to play in supporting local businesses. The council will have a role, and it's been carrying out that role, it's been very quick to get the money to small businesses through the business rates reductions, and the grants which are paid to people who get small business rate reduction. But I think beyond that, it's going to be about trying to smooth those jerks and bumps and humps in the road as we try and get the economy rolling again.
I'll bring in the Lib Dems in a minute, but I did a piece in the Oxford Mail the other day, you might have seen, about local heroes, the shops that are open, and also in Jericho Online. I mean, I think they need to be saluted, because, you know, they've kept the community going, the co-op has been superb. John Howson, Lib Dems, how do you get the community to bounce back?
I think it's going to be very difficult, and it's going, there are two things that worry me about. One is, as Alex said, we are going to be in a situation where the government has got a huge amount of debt, and there are only a limited number of ways to deal with that situation. I'm worried that they might ease up on inflation with the consequences of that. I'm also worried for those parts of the economy that depend on discretionary income, because I think it's almost certain that taxation is going to go up to pay for this in some ways, and that's going to affect people like the restaurants and some of the discretionary service industries that have built up. I'm also worried that we need to make sure the government doesn't disproportionately disadvantage those people who are already in the poorer parts of society, because if we're going to get two or three million unemployed, they may be disproportionately affected by it. On the good side, I think that because we've got two research-oriented universities in the city, we've got a lot of technological innovation going on, some of which doesn't need a big capital base in which to bounce back. If we were a heavily manufacturing area, then if you wreck your manufacturing base, it costs you a lot more in a depression to start up again. It's much easier to start up with a laptop and an online presence. So I'm hopeful that Oxford may as a whole come out, but we have to make sure that we don't end up with an even more segregated society between the haves and the have-nots.
But there's going to be retail Darwinism, isn't there? Little Clarenham Street and Walton Street will be like a set of rotten teeth in a year's time, in terms of shops closing, surely.
I think it's going to be very interesting to see whether or not, for instance, some corn market changes its profile, and the reaction of the owners of the Westgate to rents and things, I think will play a very big part in shaping the retail presence in Central Volts, particularly now we've lost Boswell's, and there must be a risk that we're going to lose Debenhams as well, given their present situation. And that will skew the axis quite a lot, even though that part of town is very important for people who use our bus system to the north.
Catherine, if you were Jericho councillor now, how would you revive Jericho after the lockdown?
You would be looking to encourage new innovative businesses to set up, where there may be being gaps created through the crisis. I think we're already seeing some innovation that is going on. There are small suppliers of local produce that haven't previously had delivery networks within Oxford, and have been relying on customers coming to the shops, and they've now partnered with Pedal and Post to be distributed, so that there is this local produce that is becoming available to the community within Jericho and beyond, within the centre of Oxford. So I think there would be a need to look at creating incentives to encourage new businesses to be starting up, that maybe are looking at, taking advantage of the green economy going forward.
Now, the people in Walton Street, particularly the Walton Street Traders' Association, say that they're suffering, God, are they hurting because of coronavirus, but particularly, they say they're hurting because of the closure of the road. What's your reaction to that? Any of you?
Well, I've not, I mean, obviously, all traders are hurting because of COVID, there's very few that are allowed to be open, the vast majority are closed, I think that's something that's understood right the way across the piece. I think, I, as, and I say this as both a Jericho resident and as a councillor for the southern end of Walton Street, the situation prior to the road closure for residents in that southern end of Walton Street was completely and utterly unacceptable. There were traffic jams on a virtually permanent basis outside their homes, and the nature of the street and where those homes are means that that's within two, three feet of cellars, basement, sorry, not cellars, basement, flats, entrances to those, and that level of traffic pollution is acute. And I think one thing that's really been brought home, I hope, to people who'd not previously thought about it, partly because you can now see, smell, hear the impact that traffic was having on not just Walton Street, but the whole of the city. And when you get stories from abroad, like the city in the Punjab, where you can now see the Himalayas, which are 130 miles away, but you can see them for the first time in 30 years, I think that indicates quite what a serious problem we have with air pollution. And while the figures are an extrapolation, so they won't hold up to scientific test, the estimate is that 36,000 deaths happen prematurely a year in the UK because of air pollution, and the share of that for Oxford is roughly 100. That's 100 people who die prematurely because of air pollution, the bulk of which comes from traffic in this city each year. And that doesn't count all the many hundreds and thousands who suffer from asthma, who suffer from breathing difficulties. And Harvard produced a report in the last few days showing that the death rate from COVID is significantly higher in areas with air pollution. Now, obviously, that's a very early report, it needs to be scientifically tested and checked, and I'm sure Colin will tell me off for giving any credence to something that's published this early in the process. But that seems to fit with what happened during the SARS outbreak, with what happened during the MERS outbreak and others. Air pollution contributes massively to ill health and to death, and I think we need to have that in mind.
And I'd like to just come, add to the comments Alex, you've made. I mean, the air pollution in Oxford and around Jericho has been significant, and we're seeing the benefits, obviously, now of the reduced traffic, and that was what we were seeing prior to the lockdown as well. I myself have been involved in the Oxfair Project, which is where we've been working with the council to map human perceptions of residents within different parts of the city, of hotspots where there have been significant levels of air pollution, and the results are going to be coming out shortly. We've been carrying around air quality monitors, representatives from each of the different neighbourhoods, and based on our daily routine, sort of tracking what, where we think the hotspots are and how the data also matches up. And I mean, it is really horrific to see, and we've seen the data coming through about the impact as well. I think low-traffic neighbourhoods are the way forward, and naturally, there can be some issues on the way and the adjustments that have to be made to the way we work, how businesses operate in the areas where these are implemented, and that requires a little planning. Perhaps the way this was implemented was not as smooth as it could have been, and we're still waiting for the results, the consultation of the impacts that have happened, the unintended impacts as a result of it. But that's not to say we should remove it, this is the way forward. What we do need to look at, though, is to how to ensure that the unintended consequences of the closure are managed in an effective way, and that requires maybe conducting a similar study to what was done in Florence Park, and I call out to Oxfordshire Liverpool Streets for the work that they've done in undertaking that study, and they've also replicated something similar for St Mary's Ward recently, and that's looked at also where you can put modular filters, what can you do to improve the public realm in and around areas like the area of shops in Jericho, to make it more friendly for pedestrians, to improve the infrastructure, so you've got more space for bikes to park, for example, how to bring people from other parts of the city to that area to benefit from the increased, the benefits of the livability of that area, the reduced air pollution, the less traffic. And we're seeing-
Catherine, do you support the closure of the road until May 2021, which is what's going to happen?
Look, I am openly supportive of that. I do say that we should have perhaps had the process managed differently, and consultation should have gone on prior to that, but I do think that this is the way forward if we're to be transitioning to a low-carbon economy. But there are issues that do need to be taken into account around the unintended consequences and the transport links, which I think John's probably better placed to answer, to ensure that those that do need public transport have access to that in the area, and that traffic, through traffic, is removed from the area, and that residents can get in and out as well.
John Howson, you're part of decision-making on this, do you?
Yes, I mean, when I was re-elected in 2017, the issue of the rat run down Kingston Road and into Walton Street was a very, very live issue, and it has been at the Resident Association AGMs in the two years since. So I've been trying to persuade the county council that, partly because of the effects of when Beaumont Street was closed, when the Randolph Hotel caught fire, that increased the amount of people coming down the Woodstock Road into St Margaret's Road and using Kingston Road, Walton Street. And they discovered when Beaumont Street was reopened, that by doing that, they could miss out a set of traffic lights, because there are traffic lights at each end of Beaumont Street. I was frankly surprised after I went to a meeting with the cabinet member on the county to yet again press for something to be done along the lines of the block that Thames Water had had in Kingston Road in the early part of last year, which didn't seem to cause any complaints at all, but it clearly cut the rat run. I went on holiday and came back and discovered that the block in Walton Street was to be extended with this experimental traffic order. I don't think I would have done it without consultation, but now we've got it, I think it's perfectly sensible, and dealing with the unintended consequences. And as you know, I've spent a lot of time with people in St Bern's Road who were affected by one of the unintended consequences of this. I think there are more we can do. There are two things that appeal to me. One is Jericho, along with Waterside in my division, is part of Oxford, which is the furthest from any bus route in the western side of the city. And if we could do something like reroute one of the 14 half-hourly services from the station to the JR, so that it comes back through Jericho, and at least up part of Walton Street and then Kingston Road, we would at least give people a bus service. The other thing that worries me, Catherine's touched on it, is that one of the things we, is an unintended consequence of the lockdown, is that we're all doing much more online, so there are many more delivery vans shooting around the city. Certainly, people in Observatory Street and St Bern's Road have noticed that. We really ought to be thinking about how we can get some of those into pedal cycle delivery for the final mile.
Yeah. John, why did it take a South African to close the road? What happened to all you Oxfords people? You know, she had the balls to say, look, let's grab it and go with it.
Well, I mean, I think that you have to ask the people who are in power, and that's the Labour Party in the city and the Conservatives in the county. I was doing my best for my residents to get rid of a rat run. We've now got the bigger problem of the consultation on connecting Oxford, which would see a barrier of the same sort in the bottom of Walton Street, in Worcester Street. And we don't know whether that will be just rush hours, or as it is in the high seven till seven, or as it is in the top of George Street, 24/7, 365 days a year. But if it's either of those, it's going to be a major impact on the travel patterns of the whole of North Oxford. I hope persuade people to start thinking about-
Let me interrupt you again, John, sorry. Connecting Jericho, say they have a thousand signatures, they've got hundreds of people on their Facebook group, and they say, you councillors are killing Jericho. What's your reaction to that?
I don't think they're killing Jericho in terms of the residents, because we've seen the benefits to the residents. I think there is an active question about the nature of the shops along Walton Street, and I was absolutely flabbergasted, fine, that they didn't have a Traders' Association to actually promote that part. And I said to them, you know, this is a wonderful part of Oxford, this is, you know, market yourself as the hidden quarter of Oxford, get A5 flowers into, when we've got the hotels and the tourist areas open, to persuade people to- to persuade people to come and use your services, you know, deliver out as well as.
John, John, they they have now, but the trouble is, it's been entirely negative. It's it's entirely, Alex, um, uh, you're killing Jericho. Connecting Jericho say, you you don't understand Jericho, you're ki- you're killing old people, you're killing trade, everything else. What's your reaction to that?
Um, well, I I don't think turning it into an adversarial, um, situation is ever the way forward. Um, um, I I think it's about engagement. And I think, I think we all probably share that the, um, uh, disappointment that the decision happened in the way that it happened. Um, you know, understand why that, why that happened. It was an opportunity and it was an opportunity taken, but it has has led to some of the challenges. Um, I think that any of us who have any knowledge at all of the history of addressing traffic will know that opposition from part of the business community, particularly the retail community, comes as part of the package. Um, the very first major shopping street in this country to be pedestrianised was London Street in Norwich in nineteen sixty seven. It was vehemently opposed by the traders, you said it would destroy it. It's now absolutely thriving, one of the most beautiful, pleasant parts of any city, anywhere in this, uh, anywhere in this country, full of businesses which are hugely successful. Uh, and we're not talking about pedestrianising here, we're typically talking about removing the rat running traffic. And we know that that's a really significant proportion, the, um, the the data from the one traffic count that was done prior to the closure shows that something like a quarter of the traffic, uh, in the bottom end of Walton Street, um, is almost certainly rat running. Probably most of it coming down Little Clarendon Street and a lot coming down from Kingston Road. So we know that that's the case. Um, I find it difficult to understand why retail, uh, by why, why restaurant businesses in particular would be negatively impacted by removing passing traffic. We all know there's a, there's almost nowhere to park, um, in Jericho, there's very, very few parking places. Um, so I I'm not convinced that having a very significant number of cars driving down Kingston Road, past restaurants, adds to or subtracts from, probably more likely to subtract from, to be honest, uh, the trade for those particular restaurants. And in fact, when you look at the sort of the details of of what people's complaints are, we have, um, ones which are very much more about personal convenience rather than than and then a sort of a compelling case about businesses. So I think the issue here is 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 to, is to work constructively as a local community, as local politicians, as representatives of the two councils, um, with the traders individually and as an association to promote. And that's what's been done in other parts of the city. Um, Catherine probably is just guessing from where you said you were, you probably know Magdalen Street. Um, well, where exactly that sort of successful, um, campaign, um, has has happened. Um, and I think that's what we, that's what we need to do. And I think I loathe to say kind of false consciousness here, I think that that's a very dismissive phrase. But, um, I think the notion that having a queue of cars slowly driving past promotes trades to a business, I think, is is something that I just don't believe is true.
Catherine. And I think, um, and the experience, uh, my understanding, and and this is from the presentation that was given by um, the, those that looked at, uh, the planned low, uh, traffic neighbourhood for St Mary's Ward or around Magdalen Street. Um, uh, it it's about, um, understanding what the new opportunities are that are going to emerge for businesses in an area that is a low traffic neighbourhood. And we can look at, uh, what has happened in Northern Forest in London as a result. And yet there was initial opposition, I understand, um, from traders there. But actually, um, over time, um, the the adjustments have been made. And with the public realm improvements that have gone along with that, um, that there has been a change that has been embraced and and new business opportunities emerged from that. So, yes, we've got to be constructive, understand and engage in understanding what these concerns are, but also look at what the new opportunities are for businesses that are going to come out of this. And, uh, the opportunities for, um, the the residents in in terms of having, you know, the the improved, um, uh, quality of of air in in the, uh, in the area to be able to cycle um, to the shops with their children and for children and, uh, and, yeah, and others to be enjoying that public space in a way that they can't if it's a rat run.
A question to both of you, virtually every shop in Walton Street has a Save Jericho flyer in it. Uh, they're saying, you know, we can't continue, you've got to reverse this, you've got to allow traffic through. If you were to go to talk to the man who runs Branca, how would you, uh, what would you say to him?
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
Either of you, or indeed Colin, or or John?
Well, I I have, I have talked to Branca about this. And indeed, uh, that was one of the conversations I had, but I was surprised that there wasn't a trading, uh, group there. And that they weren't marketing the advantages of Jericho much more widely across the city because it is a, you know, a special area, um, and it needs, it needs that sort of marketing to get people to come, come to it. I mean, you know, if you're talking about buckshin marketing by allowing people to drive past, um, as the way in which you build your business, that if, as a businessman, I wouldn't want to rely on that as a model. I want to be doing some much more creative marketing, um, uh, to actually encourage the local population to use my services and other people to to come to this special quarter, uh, as a, you know, an evening out. But I think we're now in an entirely different world, uh, for many of these businesses because their immediate thing is actually, are they going to survive the the current lockdown situation? Uh, and what is going to happen to trade in general after that, uh, with the state of the economy? And I don't think anything there was before will make a difference. And I don't think opening Walton Street will make a significant difference.
Colin, you'd be very quiet on this. Do you have, you have a view on closure of Walton Street?
Um, yes, I think it's, uh, a a good idea to have it closed. There's lots of rat running and I I I don't drive myself. But, um, when, uh, I have been driven around the place, that is, I know, seen as a a rat run, which has been used by people in cars that I've travelled in. So I recognise it as a a rat run. But I I think the whole sort of factor of of retail is changing, the whole face of retail is changing. Um, not just, um, the shops, but also the restaurants. And I think that when I first came to Oxford in nineteen eighty two, I think back how many of the restaurants that were open then are still open now? And I can think of about two, uh, they're both named Browns, one on, uh, in the Covent Market and one um, up the Woodstock Road. And, um, I think that's a good thing, change, I think, is good. Um, I think that, um, there is going to be a process of evolution as different businesses come and go. I used to love secondhand bookshops, but they've all gone by the by because of the influence of, um, the internet and, um, Oxfam, who get all their stock for free and stuff like that. So I think we've got to recognise that the retail profile of this country is going to change over time. And I think the, um, current lockdown will only, um, act as a catalyst for people's changing attitudes to, um, retail and buying stuff online.
A real question from a real, a real viewer, Patrick Dave, who lives in St Bern's Road. Would you consider making Jericho a low traffic zone by removing all free and meter parking? And remove all business parking too? Would you consider that?
Sorry, the.
This is Patrick David, who lives in Berners Road. Can you make Jericho a low traffic zone by removing all free and all meter parking and removing all business parking? Any views on that?
Uh, I've been calling, how much free, and Alex, how much free parking, uh, is there in Jericho? I wouldn't have thought there was very much anyway.
Um, there's, uh, three spaces outside the synagogue, it's about another three or four outside the, um, outside the church. Um, there's, um, I can't think of any.
A little bit of short stay.
There's a very little bit of short stray on 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 Walton Street, and then obviously there's the metered. Um, to be perfectly honest, um, I think removing it all seems to me to be, um, I'm not sure what that would, that would aim to achieve. And I think, um, in terms of trying to find a compromise with with, um, um, with businesses, I think we're all probably agreed. Um, it would appear, um, we're all, we're all four of us, um, think that, uh, reopening Walton Street and bringing the rat running traffic back is not something that we would support. So, so I think that that's a significant, um, objective. Um, but there's probably, there are businesses, um, in, uh, on Walton Street which need to draw custom from slightly further afield. Now, obviously, there are taxis, um, uh, and and in their various forms and and that sort of thing. And, um, I think, John, I would completely agree that, um, once the Worcester Street closure is in place and it's a bus gate, then, um, reintroducing some buses, uh, up Walton Street and Kingston Road would be a very good thing. Um, if I had my way, um, I would re-regulate buses entirely, uh, in a way that hasn't been done in this city since the nineteen seventies and then only very fleetingly. Um, so that we actually said where buses ought to go rather than allow the market to dictate entirely. Uh, but that's a different issue. Um, so I think, um, uh, a a low traffic zone, yes. Removing every single element of parking for people who are not from Jericho. I think I would struggle to think, think that's a good thing. I think that would have a whole series of profoundly negative consequences that we would need to be, uh, uh, need to be quite cautious about.
Uh, can I salute the work that Patrick has done in bringing the issues relating to St Berners Road uh, to the attention of everybody as a result of the closure of Walton Street? It is one of those, those three roads which were clearly understood by, um, traffic planners to be of concern before, when they were created as one-way streets, Observatory Streets, Berners Road, uh, and Plantation Road, um, two of which are in my division, one of which isn't. Um, I do think, as I highlighted earlier, they they're now partly facing the problem that we have a couple of big employers, uh, with large car parks, including O U P. Um, uh, and it would be encouraging if they could be persuaded to persuade more of their employees uh, not to drive to work. But I understand that of course many of them will live some distance away because they can't afford to live locally. Uh, but I am worried about the increase in delivery vans and the, um, almost random nature of several delivery vans, almost from the same company, following each other down the road as more and more as order online. And I think that is a issue which we're going to have to get to grips with. Um, and if it is a permanent shift in retail habits as a result, as is the current situation, uh, councillors are going to have to get to grips with it fairly quickly. Uh, and I would like to see us thinking about, um, as Catherine has said, the last mile by pedal power rather than by diesel power.
Hmm.
The councillors, I mean, the county councillors have addressed Observatory Street and St Berners Road. There are now permanent signs there, you know, they they've done what they can for the moment. And and that's choked off quite a lot of the traffic. I mean, what more can they do?
The thing is, there are opportunities through taking a planned approach to a low traffic neighbourhood, uh, as has been looked into for Florence Park and St Mary's of of, um, different forms of modal filters. I'm not a specialist in this area there, but just to say that there are these different intervention types that could be implemented to address some of the issues, the impacts that have been having, uh, having on St Berners Roads and and other streets, um, as well as a result of the closure. So, uh, applying this retrospectively obviously isn't the ideal order to to do it, but undertaking a plan such as that to look at how we can address some of these issues. And they would take into account issues around some of the parking concerns as well.
Now, a question from Hugh Lee. What's the current status of plans and consultation for Z E Z in Oxford City Centre? What's current status of plans and consultation for Z E Z in Oxford City Centre, Alex or Colin?
That's probably me. Um, uh, it's it's on hold, um, is what the 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 status is. The consultation had just begun, um, um, when we went into the, um, um, arrival of of coronavirus and then the, uh, and then the lockdown. Um, and the, um, uh, decision was taken by the those of us on the city and county councils who are are kind of steering, um, the, uh, um, technical implementation process, as it were. Um, all felt, um, that it would be inappropriate to try and do consultation. Um, the particular con- form of this consultation, Z E Z, for those who aren't familiar with it, um, it is a very small area, deliberately so because it's extremely complex and technical to get it right. Um, it's, uh, deliberately covers a, a street and a half, essentially. Um, it is going to affect businesses primarily, and there needs to be really detailed consultation. It's not kind of his five questions, fill in a form, and that's consultation. It involves, um, council officers having to sit down and work through what the consequences are for delivery times, logistics and all sorts of things. And it's really important to get it right. Um, and it's just not fair to ask businesses who have found themselves closed, who are struggling for survival, dealing with their employees and all the rest of it, um, to engage with that, that kind of consultation. So we decided to postpone the consultation at, until a point when it can be done properly.
John House, and you're not entirely comfortable with the Z E Zs, or are you, well, the gates?
Uh, I think that it it's an interesting experiment, but there are other things that need to be done. My city colleagues, um, are also interested to know how it dovetails in with connecting Oxford and the bigger pattern for traffic across Oxford. Um, one of which is a city initiative, the other is a county initiative. Uh, is one of the, I think, problems of having different tiers of government. Um, but I think whilst it's on hold, um, then we're going to have to wait and see what comes back when we we started up again.
I I just to correct, both, both initiatives are joint city and county, they're not separate.
Uh, but you are separate tier tiers of government.
Yes, and and collectively working together there. It is true to say that the various powers to make the two things work are scattered across both both authorities. But, um, both projects are joint projects and both are being taken forward in lockstep between the two authorities. There's, there's no difference between the two.
Before we get into the fine detail of of a local government, um, are you all glad you didn't have to face the voters this year?
No.
Why not, Alex?
Um, I think it's important that you should have, um, democracy. I think I can completely understand why, um, the decision was taken to cancel the election. I think anyone who looked at the, um, chaos in Wisconsin a few days ago will realise quite how ridiculous the situation it would have been to go ahead. Um, that the sooner we can have these elections, and it does appear that the city council elections will now happen on the same day as the county council ones, which will be interesting for all of us who like pavement pounding during the spring. Um, um, I I I have never shied away from from being being up for election, and sometimes it goes well and sometimes it doesn't. And I think, I think anyone who who hides from the electorate probably shouldn't be doing it.
Hey, were you not afraid that, uh, people like Connecting Jericho were going to come after you in a big way this year?
Um, I've been working as the city council's lead person on traffic for a long time, so no, I was not concerned. I'm well aware of, uh, what it's like to be public enemy number one. Colin could probably talk to you about Cornmarket and benches, he's had personal experience as well.
There's your cue, Colin, were you, were you happy not to face the electorate this year?
Um, only for personal reasons, and that was my mum was taken into hospital suddenly. So she's come down here and we're looking after her at at the moment. But, um, no, otherwise, I I I I was perfectly happy to be standing in the, uh, elections. It would have been nice to get them out of the way. But another year of, uh, knocking on people's doors, um, I'm looking forward to as well.
But Cornmarket, um, uh, Cornmarket, did you not, uh, tell us about that, how, implementing that?
Well, we, uh, we all take the brickbats of, uh, scurrilous sort of, uh, opportunists in other parties to try and paint, um, a, uh, county council um, project with, uh, the imprimatur of a, a city council project. Um, no, I I was, uh, I was, I was, I was very happy with, um, the proposals that came forward for Cornmarket. I think there was some, uh, discussion over the benches. They were designed by the people who ended up using them. I think they've been a great, uh, success. Uh, it was actually one of the few parts of that, uh, budget that came in on budget, on price. Uh, so, uh, no, I don't have a, a, a. So no, I don't have a problem with that. I think the county council needs to look back to their records of failure and address them going forward.
We've got about another five or six minutes. John Howson, you're facing the electorate next year. Are you facing a wrath of people who object to Walton Street being closed?
There will be three elections next year probably because there'll also be the Police and Crime Commissioner election, which should have taken place this year. So that with the new wall boundaries for the city will make it really difficult for some people because they'll be voting in different places and we'll have to make sure that there's a lot of good communication as there increasingly is. No, I mean, I doubled my majority last time from sixty four to one hundred and twenty five. I hope I can double it again in a division which is much bigger than city wards and stretches from north of Somertown down to St Berners Road and across to the railway and the canal. But I will of course have at least six city council candidates on the streets pounding at the same time, which I didn't have last time I was re-elected.
Catherine, are you hopeful of taking Jericho next time around?
Well, you know, I would love to have this opportunity and I'm fresh to this. This is a new experience for me and I would obviously love to have the opportunity to represent the residents of Carfax and Jericho in the future. Obviously disappointed it's not happening this year, the election, but understand the reasons why. It's a big decision standing for office like this and I don't take it lightly. I work professionally in the area of women's economic empowerment, women's financial inclusion and climate change related issues. And, and I just thought, you know, it's an opportunity for me to live my values as well, which is trying to encourage greater participation of women in these processes as well. And, and so, yeah, I didn't take the decision to.
I ask you an obvious question when people see you.
John, John, can I just say that one of the things that, to pick up what Alex said about democracy, that worries me very greatly in the emergency powers, putting off the elections till next year, is no by-elections. Now, that probably doesn't matter in the city because the, the current balance of power means that you'd have to have an awful lot of by-elections to make any difference. But it may make a difference on the county where the overall Conservative and Independent Alliance majority is very slim indeed. And I would be very unhappy for democracy if that was allowed to continue, if there were some by-elections that couldn't be fought out until May next year. Perhaps Alex can also tell me what's happening in the city in terms of your annual general meeting? Are you going to elect a new mayor in May?
That's the intention. We've got to work out the technology so that people can take part in the appropriate way. But lots of councils are facing up to the same challenge. I think my view, and it's very much the view of all of my group, is that one shouldn't let technological challenge be an obstacle to democracy. I think democracy is critically important. I think it's something that we would all very much share around this, I was going to say around this table, but around this screen. It's probably a better, better analogy. One of the things that worries me about, has always worried me about this country is precisely this, that the, the issue that John raised, that the government can by dictat just cancel elections and by-elections. That's not the case in, in, in other countries. And it shouldn't be down to the decision of a minister as to whether Oxfordshire County Council has a by-election, which might be the difference between the continuation of control of a particular administration or not. I think that that's entirely inappropriate. Personally, I would love to spend another hour talking about how this country's power structures are far too top-heavy and top-down and should be bottom-up and that local councils should be empowered to do what they like and be beholden to the electorate, not to government. But that's probably not a short.
Can we spare your last two minutes, Alex, if possible? Now, last quick question from Joel Mann about people's garden recycling is not, not being collected. What can you do about that? Why are you not collecting it and why have you not told people through the letterboxes?
I think people have been told, they're not being collected because there's not enough staff to collect them. Too many people are off ill. Obviously, the council's workforce have had to prioritise those services which are of critical importance. And the difficult decision had to be taken, garden waste didn't fall into that category. But I believe that everyone has had communication to that effect and if they haven't, I will take it up.
Okay, right, last question for me. How useful has it been today as an experiment in virtual democracy, all of you?
I think this is the way forward to, if we're going to be taking our times coming out of lockdown, having the opportunities to still bring political debate to people through virtual platforms is a, is a great opportunity for, for, for us and for those hopefully who are participating and watching.
I'm surprised, sorry, Colin. I'm surprised how easy the transfer to this style has been. I mean, it now makes teleconferencing without the video really old fashioned and very difficult to manage because you don't know who wants to speak and much more difficult to control. But I think you miss something about the, the real hustings when you're in the room with people and there is that electric two-way atmosphere. We haven't yet solved that problem with video, but no doubt the boffins are working on it.
Alex, how useful has it been for you?
I think it is useful and I think John makes a very good point. The positive for this is that I think the level of debate becomes more consensual, more congenial. It's politer, there's less grandstanding. But on the other hand, some of that grandstanding is precisely because that's the feedback you get from a live audience who, not just vocally, but with their, their, their physical reactions will tell you how well you are or you are not going, going down. And it is difficult without that. So I think this is complimentary, it's a good addition, but it's not a replacement.
Okay.
Absolutely. Well, I mean, I think question time is probably better for all the reasons Alex has said. But I happen to think Have I Got News For You is worse because you haven't got the audience participation. So it swings and roundabouts.
Okay, thank you all. Now, just to do the adverts for the next few weeks.
John, before you do that, can we thank you for setting this up? I know it's taken a lot of effort on your part and it's not just because we are old chums from L S A. But it has, I think, been useful, I think, and I hope that you will continue to repeat it.
Thank you, John. I'm hopefully going to repeat this next month with the two sides in the Walton Street debate. But in the meantime, Professor Richard Petto next week on coronavirus, measuring it and drugs. The great epidemiologist who happens to live here. The week after that, Jim Naismith, who is a professor who lives in Jericho on the work his lab does in Harwell. The week after that, Tim Boswell, who's the manager of BBC Oxford, talking. And then hopefully another virtual town hall the week after that. So the next four weeks, Wednesday at five o'clock every time, please tune in and please leave the meeting. Thank you everybody very much indeed.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.